2025 meeting of the Georgetown County Council. Please note for the record that Councilor Anderson is absent, but we do have a quorum present. Please join us in the, join us, join us with Councilor Reverend Cooper leads us in the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Senate's break. Heavenly Father, as we look to you today, the offer and finish of our faith, we thank you that you have brought us this far. We thank you for the month of May, and as we come together tonight, we ask that you would order our step, direct our path, give us the wisdom, the knowledge and understanding and the direction that we should go, but we call it down now. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Praise the Lord to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, one nation, one God, and the people who live and die in this world.
Thank you. We'll now move down to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of my counsel, Marant. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. The agenda is approved. We'll move down to special reports and presentations. Tonight's nonprofit spotlight is the YMCA Georgetown County and Francis P. Burnell Foundation, a partner in the spotlight, a local nonprofit. This week's feature nonprofit is the YMCA David Byrd, CEO will be, will present along with Ms. Terri LaChee and A.J. Jordan. Mr. Byrd.
Good evening, Council. So good to be with you tonight. I am David Byrd. I've served our YMCA movement for, it's hard to say, almost 50 years and came to the Paulies Island community here in Georgetown County, which I love, about five years ago, and have been the CEO of our Ys here in Williamsburg now, where we've just grown into Georgetown and Ori County for about two years and absolutely love it. But thank you for the opportunity to speak to you for just a few minutes tonight and so many good friends and colleagues here as well. I want to also introduce Donna Brown Cumbey, who serves at Williamsburg County as our executive director and also active older adult program. Terri LaChee, who is our executive director of youth development and outreach, and A.J. Jordan, who serves as our director of our Andrews and Georgetown location. So the YMCA, you probably know us as a swim and a gym. We've been here in this community 25 years now. We built the building about 16 years ago with many of you's support, including the county, and we could not have done it without that support. But many times people see the Y just as a place to swim, which we do a lot of, almost 8,000 kids, second graders have been, had safety around water through our partnership with you and the school system over the last several years. But what I wanted to talk to you about tonight is the next five years for the Y. We have been through a long range planning process, which I'm sure some of you've seen, but I want to highlight that tonight, and we provided a little bit of material up front for you to take with you tonight, not to overburden you with that, but I wanted you to see that. But we are founded on a mission that was founded in 1841 around our Christian principles, and that's really important because any programs that we, we don't, we don't prostheticize, we don't, we don't profess, but we do lift up Christian principles like love, hope, trust, patience, and this particular month that we're lifting up is gratitude. So tonight, I want to extend my gratitude to the county and to the residents of Georgetown County for all the great work we've been trying to do in partnership with many like Tydland's Health, who I know is here tonight. We can go to the next slide. These are our principles. They're very simple. You can't really argue with those, with faith, respect, love, honesty, trust, patience, things that we'd all would aspire to be about as human beings, and that's what the Y really does. So in our kids' programs and our youth programs and our family programs, we hope when you leave our Y or our many programs that we offer here in the county, that you are lifted with these principles that we try to aspire to. And again, it's not reading the Bible every day, but it is reaching out and offering to these young people and families, hope and opportunity for better, better life, and that's really the heart of the Y mission. Next slide. So over the last, almost a year now, we have been working on a long range vision for the Y. Many in Georgetown County, and in fact, many of you sitting in this room are involved in this, and tonight I'm proud to say we finished that. We've announced that to the community about a month ago, and it revolves around five guiding priorities that we want to focus on. The first of those is community health. So in partnership with Tydland's Health, we are working on things like Parkinson's programs, our Paulies facility. Tomorrow we'll have 60 participants in Parkinson's dealing with that. We have Alzheimer's patients there. We have fitness after rehab. You think about it, it's just lifting weights and shooting basketball, very, very different. And we partner with the hospital and other relationships here to really reach out and community health and health fairs, you will see us around. The second one, which is near and dear to my heart, and I don't need to tell you, is mental health. Many of our community residents, many of our family members, some maybe in this room might be dealing with mental health issues, and it is now a tragedy what's happening in America with our young people and our families. I've watched it over my years of service and the Y is trying to respond to this in a big way with partners in the community. Number three is college and career and teen readiness. We want to make sure our kids are ready for a career or ready for college, so that's why we're working in programs with Ori Georgetown Tech, Coastal University, and the school system here, we have a great partnership and want to do more with the school in the county to advance that. The fourth one is preschool. We want to get kids ready for first grade and kindergarten. 60-plus percent of our kids, as they are getting ready for first grade, don't know their colors, don't know their numbers. We want to be about trying to support that in our work. And finally, is accidental drowning. 4,700 adults and children drowned last year in America. Many are along the coast. We have the Black River here. We have the Winy Bay. We, I can go on and on. We have the ocean. So the YMCA is going to be focused very, very heavily on safety around water, including starting here with the partnership with the Park and Rec and the county, a mobile pool, a pool that you take into rural communities. Starting in June, we'll be going into Georgetown County with this at Andrews Recreation Center in Chappie. We'll have locations there for about four weeks. So this pool is put up, and about two hours, it can be dismantled in about the same amount of time, and it goes to the next location. It's being built right now. It was offered in Charleston County. We discovered it. We got funding for it from the Parsons Foundation and the county, both counties of Williamsburg and Georgetown. Thank you for your support with that, and that is one of the number one reasons for kids that that accidental drowning is not being able to swim. So we want to really teach them. We actually have a riptide machine, so if they get in the ocean, so it's a very unique process. And then we'll be in Williamsburg County in Hemingway, Kings Street, and Greeleyville. So, so these are our big five. Let's go to the next one if we could. These are simple definitions. You have this in your packet, councilman, to look at and review, but for us, it's really about how do we then set goals around this? And the county here has been very involved with us. So appreciate the work with Park and Recreation, the school system, and, and the funders here that supported this work. So very brief definitions, and we now have programs and services that we've developed in partnership with many in the county to deliver this. Finally, if you'll turn to the next page. So we are in an expansion mode. We now have expanded into North Myrtle Beach. We've opened an office in programming in North Myrtle Beach. We've opened an office now in Conway and one in Market Common. We've also opened an office in Andrews. We've set up in Andrews to do our programs there. We're out of space. We're in partnership with the city there, doing some work with them. We will hopefully be working soon with Tydland's Health in Carolina Forest with programs there and on and on. And what we're finding is the need is deep. The kids and families need the community and need the Y more than ever as we've expanded and to grow. And I don't need to tell any of you, I'm new here on the block five years, but I came to this area for many, many years, small town, North Carolina, where I grew up, but worked with Ys all over America. We have a tremendous need in all of these areas, so the Y is very, very excited about what we could do. In your packet tonight, I included just some of the simple programs of impact that we're doing now. As I told you, we, we're doing a lot of work in Georgetown in our after schools in Kensington, Maryville, and McDonnell Elementary. We're doing camps this summer there, youth sports programs, a variety of swim lessons and learn to swim there, safety around water, and partnerships with Teach My People, the Village Group, and others that we want to really do more with going forward. New programs as we work with the Georgetown Police Department, 17 with a bike rodeo, basketball specialty camps, and a variety of things in the sand pit area. And then as you move into Carver's Bay, the work we're doing there with our after school as well, programs at summer camps and Andrews Elementary as well, our Rising Gents with Young Men's and Boys of Color in Character, as well as our Safety Around Water program. And then finally, in Paulies Island, as you probably know, we have opened about two years ago in partnership with, with Tydland's Health, and his Bruce Bailey and some of his team are here tonight. We're so grateful for that because we've now expanded that program to service almost 4,000 people in that community in Paulies. Two weeks ago, the first time in our history, the Georgetown Y went over 1,000 memberships. First time ever in our history. We've been running 700, 800. We've introduced a new gateway financial assistance program for people that have the inability to pay. We've been doing that for some time, and this, in this last year, we raised $1.5 million for Ori and Georgetown County. Almost $700,000 of that went into this county that we raised for many of you sitting in this room, the county's support, and others. So I only have 10 minutes, and I could go. You can go. As you can tell, I'm passionate about this work. I am really excited about the work in the future. The next five years for us is very bright. We love the five priorities. We've gotten a lot of energy behind it. You'll see us make some more announcements soon with some other partnerships that we've been working on, and I'm a big believer that one plus one equals five. I don't care who gets the credit. It's about serving the people in our community and the needs. I don't need to tell any of you that have grown up here and continue to live here and thrive here, the need is great and growing. Our kids and families need the Y like never before. The leading cause of death for over 75-year-olds now is loneliness. People are more lonely than ever before. We had a member come into our facility not long ago and said, "The Y saved my life." "What do you mean?" He said, "My wife of 52 years died. I was ready to commit suicide. I've lost the love of my life, and when I come to the Y, I feel like I'm somebody." That's what we do. Do we do swim lessons? And do we do swim? And do we basketball? We do, but we affect loneliness, confidence, trust building, team building, all those things we would hope to aspire to our kids and our families every day. God bless you for your support here at the county. More to come. If we can be helpful in any way, we want to be. You can see that we have a great team around the coastal Carolina area, and we're here to serve any way we can. God bless you. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Byrd from Council? Thank you, sir, for everything you do for Georgetown County. Next, we'll move on to the employee of the quarter recognition. We'll have a report from Mr. Walt Ackerman, Director of Administration Service. Mr. Ackerman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I usually don't have to follow somebody who's saving lives, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna try real hard. I do want y'all to thank me ahead of time because Dwight offered to do the presentation. We'd have been here till tomorrow afternoon sometime, because he is very, very enthusiastic about both of these individuals. They both worked in and for the library, so they, their both nominations came out of the library system this time. I think that might be the first time ever we've had two from the same department. But first up is employee of the quarter, Mr. Dylan Burdick. Dylan, would you like to come on up, sir? All right. Now, in your packet is quite a considerable write-up of all the things that, that Dylan has done and does every day that caused him to be nominated for employee of the quarter. But you guys can read that. I'm not going to talk about that stuff. Just, I can tell you Dylan is one of the people who is so passionate about their work. He loves to do what he does, to the point where it wasn't many months ago, we got a phone call, and Dylan and the other folks in his department, they were really backed up and they wanted to do some extra work. How could they work all the hours they wanted to work and not have to worry about the county paying them, since they can't do that? Well, what if? What if this scenario? And what if I said, "If y'all don't hush, I'm gonna go down and put you in employee jail." But they, they love what they do beyond anything I've ever seen. One of the things on, on the paper that you'll see, Dylan created these handcrafted ink pins, laser cut, for the anniversary, 225th anniversary celebration of the library, which Dwight conveniently used as props to give out to everyone during the nomination process. Not saying that put Dylan over the top, but it certainly didn't hurt. But Dylan is, Dylan is fantastic, and, and not only for those reasons, but recently there's been a member of Dylan's department who has had some health issues and stresses, and it kind of takes a special person to step up and go, "Well, you know what? I, I know you, you can't do everything you want to do. I'll work extra hard and I'll pick up your slack so that nothing is, is impacting the, the folks who come into the library." And, and he, he did it without being asked, and, and I think that speaks a testament to his, his hard work and dedication. And for all these reasons that you see listed here and a host of others, this is why Dylan is being recognized as employee of the quarter. So thank you very much.
Go stand up there with the chairman.
Dwight's coming. Byrd before he left.
Okay. Mr. Byrd, I just want to thank you for your outstanding job. Thank you for making a difference in the county. We appreciate everything that you're doing, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thanks, sir. We'll move on down to the Innovation Award. Mr. Ackerman.
All right. And again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, we have someone who is, his primary focus, about 95% of what he does is working with the library. Mr. John King. John, if you want to come on up? I've never seen John look this nice, so it's, it's awesome. So John works in our IT department, but due to the nature of the library system, they are very heavily involved in IT usage. So John spends almost all of his time working with the library, keeping things up, keeping things going, innovating processes and whatnot. And so the Innovation Award, so this is doing something, you know, thinking out of the box, doing something a little unordinary, I guess, to make things move. When, when we constructed a new library or the renovations on the, on the new part of the library, it became quite evident when we built a auditorium that was about four or five times bigger than what we had before, the equipment out of the little tiny auditorium would not work very well in the new auditorium. So they went around and priced a whole bunch of stuff out, and the cost was going to be about $11,000 or $12,000 to really get a good AV system and, you know, so people could have meetings and it's, it's effective and high quality stuff. And John says, "You know, I think I could do better." So he went out and started moving and shopping around and looking and kind of thinking about what he can do and how he could optimize all of the, the usage of that room and ended up for about three grand, or, I'm sorry, $3,800, ended up putting one of the most fantastic state-of-the-art systems. Now, I think part of it was John would walk around, and if he saw something not being used, he might just sort of take it and strategically relocate that asset to the library system, but it, it turned out fantastic. It's a very, very user-friendly system, which is something, it was overly complicated before, and it really took an IT person to run it, and John's kind of turned it on, made it a turnkey, got a single remote that runs everything, and so even people like me can walk in and just, and run a presentation. So for his innovation in getting this thing done with, with little to no money, we're awarding John the Innovation Award. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Let's go get a photo. We move on down to the public comment section. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each people, each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and no speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. A timer is provided on screen, and at the end of your time, please wrap up your comments promptly. While, while speaking, please be sure to address counsel only and refrain from personal attacks. While a speaker has the floor, the public will respect the speaker and allow them their time to address counsel. Members of the public who wish to address counsel during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of counsel before the meeting. Madam clerk, do we have any speakers tonight?
There are no speakers, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Moving right along then. We move on down to the consent agenda. RFP number 25-012 Georgetown County Tax Form Printing, Processing, and Mailing. The recommendation is to award to Black Mill Print Services of Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. Task order number one to procurement number 24-048, non-engineered road repair, resurfacing ceiling, marketing and drainage, IDIQ. Georgetown County Public Services and Public Works have reviewed the proposals and received, received and recommended the approval of task order number one as quoted. Procurement number 25-021, Fire Station 81 Concrete Repair. Staff recommends reward to Benton Concrete and Utilities LLC of Conway to Benton Concrete and Utilities LLC of Conway, South Carolina for a base bid amount of $76,755 with an alternate number one amount of $30,000, $30,428 for a total complete bid amount of $107,183. Contract number 21-068 Change Order Number One for New Georgetown County Detention Center. The Georgetown County Sheriff's Office and Public Works Staff recommend the approval of change order number one. We move down to resolutions and proclamations. Proclamation number 25-11 to proclaim May 2025 as National Tennis Month in Georgetown County. We will have a report from Ms. Beth Goodall, Director of Parks and Recreation Community Services. Ms. Goodall, you have the floor. That works for me as well.
So we, we have some folks from Staples Tennis that are going to come up and receive the proclamation.
Now, these tennis players are pickleball players.
It will meet it. What's up?
Thanks for coming, guys. Thank you. Good to see you.
So with this proclamation, we appreciate council declaring May 21st Tennis Day in Georgetown County.
On the consent agenda, by virtue of consent agenda, they're all approved. Also, do I have a motion on the floor for proclamation number 2512511 to proclaim May 2025 as National Tennis Month in Georgetown County?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Put the cart before the horse, but I think we got there. Proclamation number 25-12 declaring May 18 through 24, 2025 as Public Works Week in Georgetown County. We will have a report from Ms. Jackie Broach, Public Information Officer.
May is a very busy month. As you just stated, next week will be the 65th National Public Works Week. We are asking you to proclaim a Public Works Week in Georgetown County. It is my pleasure to, to present this for you. The theme of this year's Public Works Week is People, Purpose, Presence. People who serve, purposes that, places that shine and presence that is driven. Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, to public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Georgetown County. These infrastructure, facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of our Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. We are not going to do a photo tonight. I believe we're going to save that for the Baco Rodeo next week, which is on Thursday. And for those of you who have not had the pleasure of attending before, it will be quite an experience. I hope that you enjoy it. I could go on, but I will keep it short and, and there.
Thank you, Ms. Broach. You've heard the report from Ms. Broach about proclamation number 2512 declaring May 18 through 24, 2025 as Public Works Week in Georgetown County. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Charlton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? Proclamation is approved. Move now to proclamation number 25-14 proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Georgetown County. We'll have a report from Ms. Alma Sierra, our deputy clerk to council. Ms. Sierra, floor is yours.
Hi. So this proclamation is one that we see annually and I'm going to ask that Ms. Keisha Guest Black, the Georgetown Clinic Director for the South Carolina Department of Mental Health, say a few words.
To Mr. Chairman, members of the council and all those assembled as well as, as, as well as those who are virtually attending. My name is stated as Keisha Guest Black and I serve as the clinic director for Wacomont Center for Mental Health here in Georgetown County. The mental health of those in this county is essential to the continued well-being and vitality of our families, businesses and communities. Mental health issues affect people of all ages, gender, race, ethnicity, religion or economic status. 20% of children and young people ages three to 17 have either a mental, emotional, developmental or behavior disorder. Stigma and the fear keep many of them from asking and seeking the help they so desperately need. So I stand before you on behalf of our 500 patients, which includes adult, school-based, intensive community treatment and medication management and the 20 staff to say thank you for designating May as Mental Health Awareness Month in this great county. Thank you for helping to raise awareness, reducing the stigma and delivering the message that with proper treatment, recovery is possible. Again, my name is Keisha Guest Black and I do approve this message.
You've heard the report from Ms. Guest Black. Is there a motion on the floor for proclamation number 25-14 proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Georgetown County?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Moran. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries. Move on down to proclamation number 25-15 to proclaim the week of May 18 through 24 as National Safe Boating Week in Georgetown County. We'll have a report from Ms. Sierra again. You have the floor.
So National Safe Boating Week will be held from May 17 through the 23rd, reminding all boaters to brush up on boating safety skills and prepare for the boating season. This is the annual kickoff of the Safe Boating Campaign and global awareness effort and staff recommends that council passes this proclamation.
You've heard the report from Ms. Sierra about proclamation number 25-15 to proclaim the week of May 18 through 24 as National Safe Boating Week in Georgetown County. Is there a motion on the floor?
So.
So moved by Councilor Charlton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Proclamation is approved. Move down to proclamation number 25-13 in recognition of Tidlins Health and to congratulate the organization on its 75th anniversary. Ms. Sierra, you have the floor.
Last one, I promise. Okay. So Tidlins Health accepted its first patient on May 11th in 1950 here in Georgetown County. And since that time, the organization has grown to become the largest healthcare provider in Ori, Georgetown and Williamsburg Counties with four hospitals and more than 70 outpatient medical offices. They have reached an important milestone and that is 75 years of service this year. So I would like to invite the president, Mr. Bruce Bailey, along with two members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Moran and Mr. GP Ford Jr. to the podium to say a few words.
Council chair and chairpersons of Georgetown County, when I look at y'all, I look at my brothers and my sister. This same attitude took place with the group of World War I and World War II veterans at the VFO post, American Legion post, excuse me, 114 at Georgetown. My grandfather, Albert W. Ford, was commander of the post at the time. He organized a committee to raise money to build a hospital for our community and raised money they did. All of the merchants, international paper companies had a buck of brick that they did a payroll deduction on. We were still shy and my grandfather told my great uncle Ralph, his brother, you need to call your friend Tom Yawkey and ask him for a donation. Tom stepped up with a $100,000 donation enough to give us fund money to build a hospital. And thank goodness for Tom and Gene Yawkey and, and post after their death, the Yawkey Foundation for they continue to support our hospital. Anyway, this same community effort is true today by our board of visitors. We're not, not private, not for profit corporation. None of us get paid, but our payment is just millennium in payment for seeing the care that we give our community and we hope, we thank y'all for the war. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Can you get a picture? Yeah.
Hang on one second. Let me. You've, you've heard the report on proclamation number 2513 in recognition of Tidlins Health and to congratulate the organization on their 75th anniversary. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Moran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mercado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Proclamation is approved. Thank you, guys, for everything you do. Move down to third reading of ordinances, number ordinance number 25-04, an ordinance to authorize and approve the, an agreement for the development of a joint industrial business commerce and residential complex between Georgetown County and Ori County with property located in Georgetown County, also known as Georgetown Port, to provide for the payment and fee of, fee, payment of a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes by business and industries located in the park as may be applicable to apply zoning and other laws in a park to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park and to provide for the distribution of park revenues between the counties. We'll have a report from Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, council members. You recall from second reading, this is simply to establish a multi-county industrial park for the future development of the port, of the, excuse me, the Georgetown Port. The only change to note is simply in the title. At second reading, the title stated industrial, I believe it was industrial and commerce complex, and we added in a business, commerce and residential because as, you know, we don't know exactly what the port property is going to look like, but it will likely be a mixed use. So we simply wanted to cast the net as broad as we can. Other than that is the same from second reading. Thank you.
You've heard the report from Attorney Watson on ordinance number 25-04, an ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement for the development of a joint industrial business, commerce and residential complex between Georgetown County and Ori County with property located in Georgetown County, the Georgetown Port, to provide for the payment of a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes by businesses and industries located in the park as may be applicable to apply zoning and other laws in the park and to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park and to provide for the distribution of park revenues between the counties. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Moran. We will now have a, we'll now entertain a motion to incorporate the amended text. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Is there any discussion? We will now vote on a third reading approval. All in favor of the third reading of ordinance 25-04, please raise your hands. All opposed? We will now, any discussion on incorporating the amended text? We'll now vote on the incorporation of the amended text. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Move down to ordinance number 25-07, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2425 operating budget of Georgetown County. We'll now hear a report from Ms. Karis Langston, our finance director. Langston.
Good, good evening, Chairman, County Council. Ordinance 2507 amends the fiscal year 25 operating budget as outlined in the body of the ordinance. This ordinance has been changed since second reading specifically to change sections four, eight, 11 and 12. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on any one of those items. Otherwise, staff requests that you approve third reading of ordinance number 2507.
You've heard the report from Ms. Langston on ordinance number 25-07, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2425 operating budget of Georgetown County. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Charlton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jay, do we have to vote on the amended portion or can we just vote as is? Oops.
Yeah, I would. If you're amending it from the prior, then yes, follow roughly the, the same procedure you did on the prior ordinance.
Okay. Yep. So is there a motion to, to incorporate the amended, the amended ordinance?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll now move down to the, we'll vote on the amended ordinance as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? The motion carries. We'll now move back to the original ordinance. We were now, all in favor of the amended ordinance 25-07, please raise your hands. All opposed? The motion carries. I hope I did that right. We'll move down to ordinance number 25-08 to amend Appendix C Stormwater Management and Flood Damage Prevention Part Two Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance of Georgetown County, South Carolina Code of Ordinances. We'll have a report from Ms. Holly Richardson, our planning director. Ms. Richardson, floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed last month, this is an update to our flood damage prevention ordinance. It was last amended in April of 2023 and regulates construction in flood hazard zones that are identified on the firm maps or the flood insurance rate maps. We have had some recent changes to our flood maps, which we'll discuss in the next agenda item in the Upper Black River Watershed section, and that necessitated some changes to the actual text of the ordinance. These are needed in order to meet the minimum standards and requirements of both state and federal regulations. We've sent the draft to DNR. They have approved the changes. This, again, is a mandatory change. We haven't had any changes to the ordinance since second reading. I'd be glad to answer any questions for you. I'd be glad to answer any questions for you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson? Chair will entertain a motion on ordinance 25-08 to amend Appendix C Stormwater Management and Flood Prevention, Flood Damage Prevention Part II Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance of Georgetown County, South Carolina Code of Ordinances. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Charlton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance approved. Ordnance 25-10 to rezone one parcel located at 828 South Morgan Avenue and Andrews, TMS 01-0101-060-00-00 from one half acre residential to general commercial. Do we? I thought I was wrong. I'm sorry. Let me back up. I knew Holly was up there for a reason. Ordnance number 25-09, an ordinance to adopt newly revised flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map. Ms. Richardson, I apologize.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. These two are closely related. This is the actual change to the map. This deals with the northwest section of our county. I think it's referred to as the Rose Hill area. These are the actual map changes. Our current maps have an effective date of May 29, 2023, and these maps have to be adopted by June 18 of this year. You can look up the changes to the link that's provided in their report there if you want to see them, but basically, it takes this section of the county and provides some elevation numbers to some areas that were previously unnumbered in terms of the flood zone, and we haven't had any changes since second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me one second.
Attorney Watson.
Apologize. May I have a quick sidebar with Ms. Richardson here?
Certainly. Would you like me to sing? We now will entertain a, are there any questions for Ms. Richardson on ordinance 25-09?
Ms. Richardson, without looking at, pulling the map up, how far did this go down Rose Hill? You recall?
Um, I can't give you a mileage. Stephen kind of referred to it as the Rose Hill area, so I would assume it incorporates a pretty good chunk of it, but doesn't get down into the Brown's Ferry area.
Okay.
So it's more that quadrant section, kind of from, you know, County Line Road, obviously, Brown's Ferry at the south, and then almost up to Pleasant Hill at the north.
Okay. Thank you.
For the record, Ms. Richardson, we don't have a choice on this. We'll lose FEMA funding if we don't approve, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. You've heard the report from our Planning Director, Ms. Richardson, on ordinance 25-09, an ordinance to adopt the newly revised flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? The ordinance passes. Now we'll go to ordinance 25-10. To rezone one parcel located at 828 South Morgan Avenue and Andrews, TMS 01-0101-060-00-00 from one half acre residential to general commercial. This is in Council District 5. Ms. Richardson, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. As you said, this property is currently zoned R1/2. It does have an existing commercial building that was there significantly prior to when we zoned this part of the county in 2008. This request is being sponsored by county staff to basically bring that nonconforming use into compliance with the correct zoning district. The future land use map shows this property as residential, however, the property located east of South Morgan Avenue is all designated as community commercial, and the community commercial place type includes community or regional retail or service uses. Staff is not recommending an amendment to the future land use map at this time. The Planning Commission held a public hearing. There was no one that spoke at that meeting, and the commission unanimously recommended approval. We haven't had any changes to this request since second reading.
You've heard a report from Ms. Richardson on ordinance 25-01, to rezone one parcel located in 828 South Morgan Avenue and Andrews, TMS 01-0101-060-00-00 from one half acre residential to general commercial. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson? Chair will entertain a motion on ordinance 25-10.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 25-10.
We have a motion from Ms. Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mercado. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move down to ordinance 25-12 to rezone five parcels totaling approximately 49.14 acres located on Greenleaf Court west of Old Town Avenue from the Harmony Township Plan Development to Forest Agriculture, TMS 01-0438-001-03-02, 03, 04, 05, and 09, and to amend the boundaries of the plan development. This is in Council District 3. And Ms. Richardson, you have the floor.
These parcels are currently part of the Harmony Plan Development, even though they are no longer affiliated with the PD. The POA has sent us a letter and said they don't object to these, this section being removed. The majority of the tract, about 45 acres, has already been put in a conservation easement, so it will be restricted as to future development. The other four acres have one acre parcels and a road right of way that will meet the minimum requirements of the FA zoning district. The surrounding properties are zoned either PD or conservation preservation, and the future land use map shows this tract as residential. We're not recommending a change to the future land use map as part of the request. No one spoke at the public hearing for this item except for the applicant, and the commission recommended approval to you for the request. We have not had any changes since the second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson? You've heard the report from Ms. Richardson on ordinance 25-12 to rezone five parcels totaling approximately 49.14 acres located on Greenleaf Court west of Old Town Avenue from the Harmony Township Plan Development to Forest Agriculture, TMS number 01-0438-001-03-02, 03, 04, 05, and 09, and to amend the boundaries of the plan development in Council District 3. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Charlton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 25-12 is approved. We move down to first reading of ordinances. The following ordinance is to be read into the record only. Ordinance number 25-16, a request to rezone one parcel located off Powell Road in the Sampic Community totaling approximately 103.88 acres, identified as TMS number 01-0434-033-00-00 from Village 10,000 square feet residential or R10 to Forest Agriculture. This is in Council District 3. Ordinance number 25-17, a request to rezone one parcel totaling 1.401 acres located on the corner of North Fraser Street and Fox Court from 10,000 square foot residential or R10 to general commercial. This is in Council District number 7. Ordinance number 25-18, to amend Article 4 general provisions, Article 5 established of districts, Article 6 requirements by district, Article 7 area yard and height requirements, and Article 10 signed regulations to add a new zoning district, the Neighborhood Amenity Zoning District, to provide for the protection of open spaces for existing neighborhoods in the event of closure of an existing recreational or sporting facility. Ordnance number 25-19, rezone Litchfield Country Club Golf Course located throughout the Litchfield Country, throughout the Litchfield Country Club neighborhood and along Country Club Drive in Litchfield identified as TMS number 04-0186-089-00-00 from 10,000 square foot residential or R10 to Neighborhood Amenity. This is in Council District 6. Ordnance number 25-20, to rezone the Founder's Club Golf Course located throughout the Hagley neighborhood and the intersection of Kings River Road and Highway 17 in Polly's Island identified as TMS number 04-0208-087-00-00 from 10,000 square foot residential or R10 to Neighborhood Amenity District NA, and this is in Council District number 2.
Mr. Chair.
Council, the chairman.
You.
The chairman recognizes Councilor Mercado.
Over the last several weeks, I have spent hours talking to property owners, friends, and neighbors concerned about the ordinances regarding two well-established neighborhoods on the Wacomoneck, Litchfield Country Club and Hagley. Those discussions with various concerned residents made it abundantly clear that the misinformation and propaganda that has been disseminated by Keep It Green and Keep It Green advocacy has stoked fear and confusion within the community, resulting in conflict, mistrust, and division within the community between neighbors and between the people and elected officials. Therefore, I must now take the time to clean up the mess created by Keep It Green and Keep It Green advocacy and its associates, and set the record straight so that you know the real facts regarding this issue. The Neighborhood Amenity District that County Council is putting forward results in a 95% reduction in zoning density. Most may not know that the current zoning density for these neighborhoods is 20 dwellings per five acres or R10. However, the new Neighborhood Amenity District reduced that to one dwelling per five acres. That is a 95% reduction in density. Again, 95%. That is an amazing win for our community. I would hope that the affected neighborhoods and residents support this revision, which will help to preserve these neighborhoods and golf course businesses as they currently exist. Tonight, I'm making the motion for pending ordinance doctrine on ordinances 25-18, creating the Neighborhood Amenity District, quote, "to provide for the protection of open spaces for existing neighborhoods in the event of the closure of an existing recreational or sporting facility." Ordinance 25-19, to rezone Litchfield Country Club Golf Course from residential R10 to Neighborhood Amenity District. And ordinance 25-20, to rezone Founder's Golf Club Golf Course from residential R10 to Neighborhood Amenity District. This will serve as a stopgap while the aforementioned ordinances make their way through the legislative process. I hope that I can count on my peers to pass pending ordinance doctrine on all three of these ordinance. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Mercado. Attorney Watson, we have to vote on this, correct?
Is, do you have a motion that you brought? Is that a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it's honestly, it's out of order at first reading to take up discussions or actions regarding ordinances at first reading. However, the motion is on the floor. What I would recommend is that the motion be tabled until the end when, before you adjourn, you call for any other business. If at that time, council would like to take up the motion, vote on it at that time, it would be appropriate. You could re-bring your motion. But it, and this is, this is good for council to remember in the future as well. First reading is title only. It is not to be discussion, debate, or anything on any ordinance is on for first reading only. So I would recommend, I would advise you table the motion for now, proceed with your agenda. Before you come back at the end of business, when you call for any other business, the motion could be brought at that time and voted upon. All right?
Thank you.
Yeah, we can table it.
Let's, yeah, recommend we table the motion.
Sounds good.
There a motion to table the motion?
Yeah. There's a motion to table the motion.
Second and vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mercado. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? The motion is tabled. We will now move down to approval of amendments. A regular council meeting of April 22, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the amendments?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Marant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? The meeting, the agenda meetings are approved. We will now move to a legal briefing in Executive Session, Executive Session to discuss economic development matters and receive legal advice on land use regulations pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated 30-4-70A5. Is there a motion to move into Executive Session?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mercado. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? We are in Executive Session. All opposed, we are in the executive session.
We have returned from executive session. For the record, no votes were taken or any opinions were expressed. I'll now entertain a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Charlton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. We're now back in open session. Is there any further business to come before the council tonight?
Yes, there is.
Councilor Mercado.
Shall I reread the comments?
Absolutely. I would bring the motion if you're asking me, but...
Great. Mr. Chair, over the last several weeks, I have spent hours talking to property owners, friends, and neighbors concerned about the ordinances regarding two well-established neighborhoods on the Wacoma Neck, Litch Hill Country Club and Hagley. Those discussions with various concerned residents made it abundantly clear that the misinformation and propaganda that has been disseminated by Keep It Green and Keep It Green advocacy has stoked fear and confusion within the community resulting in conflict, mistrust, and division within the community between neighbors and between the people and elected officials. Therefore, I must now take the time to clean up the mess created by Keep It Green and Keep It Green advocacy and its associates and set the record straight so that you know the real facts regarding this issue. The Neighborhood Amenity District that County Council is putting forward results in a 95% reduction in zoning density. Most may not know that the current zoning density for these neighborhoods is 20 dwellings per five acres, R10. However, the new Neighborhood Amenity District will reduce that to one dwelling per five acres. That is a 95% reduction in density. Again, a 95% reduction in density. This is an amazing win for our community. I would hope that the affected neighborhoods support this revision which will help to preserve these neighborhoods and golf course businesses as they currently exist. Tonight, I'm making the motion for pending ordinance doctrine on ordinances 25-18, creating the Neighborhood Amenity District to provide for the protection of open spaces for existing neighborhoods in the event of the closure of an existing recreational or sporting facility. 25-19, to rezone Litch Hill Country Club Golf Course from residential R10 to Neighborhood Amenity District. And 25-20, to rezone Founder's Golf Course from residential R10 to Neighborhood Amenity District. This will serve as a stopgap while the aforementioned ordinances make their way through the legislative process. I hope I can count on my peers to pass this pending ordinance doctrine on all three of these, and I know we have to take them separately. So I move that we have pending ordinance doctrine on... Do you want to start with 25-18?
I'll work.
Do I have a second?
Second, sorry.
You heard the motion. There's a second by Councilor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Pending ordinance is approved.
And for pending ordinance doctrine, I've moved that we do that for 25-19.
You've heard a motion from Councilor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Pending ordinance is approved.
And I also moved to pass pending ordinance doctrine on 25-20.
You've heard a motion from Councilor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Pending ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Is there any further business to come before Councilor at this time? Hearing none, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
So moved by Councilor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. We are adjourned.